Because I can't, y'all breaking up so bad I can't hear.
Hmm.
Live on Facebook.
Yeah, we're live. Okay, I think we are live at this point.
Okay, media marketing shows that we are, the meeting is now live on Facebook.
It is.
Okay, so before we get started, let's do a sound check. I do know that our internet services are a little, they're poor right now. So let's just do a quick visual. So if you, media and marketing team, if you check Facebook and see how we look or sound, as well as a check on our conference bridge to make sure the people that are on the conference bridge can hear us.
District one, Julie.
You just give me one moment, Julie, I would do your roll call momentarily. I'm just trying to make sure our, all of our mics and our sound and visuals are ready to go.
At this point, we don't have any, Facebook is good, we don't have anybody on the conference call that's got time.
Okay, okay. Due to the fact that we have no public hearings on, on the agenda at this time, the phone lines are just being used as a means of communication with citizens who do not prescribe, subscribe to social media. So there's just open for them to listen in on the council meeting. No questions or comments will be taken from either of those medians at this time. Of course, after the meeting, we would be happy to entertain any questions. However, it's just as if we're having a normal council meeting in which unless you are on the agenda, you are not allowed to speak during those, during those sessions. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with our roll call. District one.
District one here, Julie.
District two.
District two here.
District three.
District three here.
District four.
Four here.
District five. District six. I know Mr. Floyd is on the way over. District seven.
I'm here.
All right, clerk of council.
Yeah.
Chief of finance.
Here.
Attorney Jenkinson. Attorney Jenkinson.
He was on.
And our financial advisors are on board right now. If you all would please introduce yourselves.
Larry Finney, partner with Green Finney.
And, and I'm Emily Sobchak, also partner with Green Finney.
Right. Anyone else that I didn't remember? Also later on during executive session, our special counsel attorney Stan Barnett will be on during the executive session to discuss the issue of the airport. So I think we have everyone, and as always, my great media and marketing team is on board. May I remind council members that when we are attending to the business of the council meeting, that please ensure that when you're signifying, you please make sure you, are you voting, please make sure you announce your council district and your name when you're voting. We're going to go ahead and call the regularly scheduled council meeting, which is today, June eighth, twenty twenty, to order. Council members, again, I guess they remember to state your name. The invocation will be provided to us by Councilman Floyd, if he is back in the, in the building now.
No ma'am, he's not.
Okay. I need another council member.
Councilman Wood.
Oh, okay.
Let us pray.
Okay.
Our Father, who art in heaven, and God, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for the dawning of another day, heavenly Father, we've never seen before. You, God, we want to ask you right now, as we enter into this meeting, to do the business of this county of Williamsburg, that you help us and guide us, oh, Jesus, the things that we do and say be pleasing in your sight. And the decisions that we make, Lord, let them be for the benefit of this county of Williamsburg. And when we depart from this place, heavenly Father, please grant us safe mercy and travel back to our residences. These and many other blessings we pray, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Man, amen. Thank you. The next order of business is approval of the minutes, that, approval of minutes for public hearing and the regularly scheduled council meeting, that was May nineteen, twenty twenty. Need a motion for approval.
Some of.
Second.
You are, that's count, that's District seven, may.
Right.
Say again?
Yes, seven.
Who's second?
Uh, District three, Jonathan Miller.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by stating your name and your district.
Carolyn Lemon, District seven.
Approval District four.
Approval District one.
Approval District two.
District six. Yes, District three.
Okay, opposers have the same right? They ordered approval of the minutes. The next order of business is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero seven, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a deed conveying three point nine acres or more located in the town of King Street in Oland by Williamsburg County to the town of King Street in accordance with the consideration and agreement in the contract of sale entered into on the sixteenth day of April, twenty twenty. The deed to be executed by the supervisor and tested by the clerk of court. What is the pleasure of council? We need a motion.
Got Jonathan Miller, District three, go move.
We need a second.
Second. Lemon, District seven.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the adoption of ordinance number two zero two zero zero seven, please signify by just identifying your district number only.
District seven.
District three.
District four. District two.
District one.
Opposers have the same right? For third reading and adoption of ordinance number two zero two zero dash zero seven. The next order of business is third reading and adoption of ordinance number two zero two zero dash zero eight, an ordinance authorizing the sale of Williamsburg County owned real property located at Williamsburg County Airport, more particularly shown on a map by Kevin Wilson, RLS, dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty, in accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance. We need a motion.
Motion for third reading, coming from District four.
Second. District seven.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight, please signify by district number only.
District four.
District seven.
District three.
District two.
District one.
District six.
Opposers the same. It is so ordered for adoption of ordinance number two zero two zero zero eight. There's nothing for second reading, so we only, we're going to move to first reading, which is, I'm going to, at this point, I'm just going to read the ordinance, but I'm going to give the financial advisor, the advisors, the opportunity to kind of explain as well as this particular ordinance as well, or ordinance as well as the, I guess I can even go, do it all at one time. All right, so this is going to be first reading of ordinance number two zero two zero zero nine, an ordinance providing for issuance of a taxable or tax exempt, tax and pace, uh, tax anticipation note in the amount of three point five million dollars for Williamsburg County for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty, and ending June twentieth, twenty twenty one. I'm hereafter referred to as the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. So I'm going to let our, our financial advisors kind of get it a little bit into this as well.
You want us to go ahead and address that separately from the budget, Dr. Wright?
I think you can go ahead and do them both. And then we, once we get to that point, we, council will have an opportunity at that point to.
Okay.
So let's.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Larry Finney, everybody, and we appreciate the, Emily and I appreciate the opportunity to be here and, and to get to talk with you. We have been working with Dr. Wright and Ms. Nelson for a couple of months now, evaluating the county's finances in, in obviously some very unusual and difficult circumstances. And so we're coming with a, a couple of different recommendations related to both the tax anticipation note and, and the budget. The tax anticipation note, the three point five million dollars that we're recommending the county do, is, is similar to what you did in the prior year. And I do want to say that Dr. Wright and Ms. Nelson, they've really done a good job managing the cash flow in some very difficult circumstances. I really thought that when we started evaluating all this, that the county would not be able to keep the amount of the tan to the similar amount that it was last year. And so that's a testament to the good job that they're doing. I will say, one of the things that makes this a little more challenging for Williamsburg County, and I'll, I'll talk about it in, again, in just a minute, but Williamsburg County, you find yourself with your general fund in a place where you do not have fund balance available to help carry you through sometimes like we find ourselves in now. So as a result, what we, what we are, are recommending that the council consider with your continuing resolution for the twenty twenty, the fiscal year twenty, ending two thousand twenty one, June thirtieth, that the recommendation is that you adopt a continuing resolution that's at eighty-five percent of what you had as a budget for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty years. So that would be a fifteen percent reduction from what you have budgeted in this, this current year. That would represent about three point four million dollars. And what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and explain a little bit about the logic and, and our thought process with, with why we're recommending this. The, one of the first things we did is to go back and look at the last recession and what happened at the county back in the two thousand eight to two thousand eleven time period. And when we looked at the revenues for that time period, the county revenues were down overall about eight percent. So we use that as a starting point to look at what's happening with this current pandemic situation that we find ourselves in. And there's a few reasons that we feel like this particular situation could even be worse than the recession that we, we experienced about ten years ago. So I want to highlight a few things for you in that regard. One is the unemployment numbers and situation with this time period is worse than it was even during the recession. It was up, last month, unemployment was up to almost fifteen percent. And the Department of Labor just came out and said that they revised the, their initial numbers they put out, and now they're saying that the unemployment as of this last month then is up to about sixteen percent. So unemployment wrapped up, ramped up very, very rapidly. Number two is during the recession, we did not have to have so many businesses that had to close their doors, even businesses that were, were in good financial condition. But as a result of so many businesses having to close their doors, bankruptcies are up, up significantly from, from the last recession. One thing that obviously makes this a lot more difficult is we're not dealing with just an economic crisis, but we're dealing with a health crisis, which makes this more challenging. And there are just so many unknowns that are just difficult to even know what's going to happen next week, next month, let alone next year. We don't know what the health recovery is going to be like. You know, there's discussion about maybe a second wave of the virus later this year. The economic recovery, what we're reading so far is that the economic recovery is, is going to be slow, just because of all the unknowns that we're experiencing. On top of all that, I think most of you probably know that the state has, at the state level, has done a continuing resolution as well, and they are, they've said they're going to come back in September and kind of evaluate what to do at the state level. So that's an unknown that the county has to deal with as well. The, there's a couple of things in general from a number standpoint that I just want to make you aware of. So with Ms. Nelson, Emily and I evaluated the current financial condition of the county as we, as we go forward. And out of a little over twenty-two million dollar budget, almost five million, about four point nine million of your expenses are what we would consider fixed costs, which means it's very, going to be very difficult to reduce or cut those. So what that leaves is about seventeen million roughly that the county has to work with when we talk about cutting costs. And out of that seventeen million, actually out of the twenty-two million, almost sixty percent of that is salaries and benefits. And so it's going to be extremely difficult to make the kind of, of expense reductions that the county needs to make without part of that being related to salaries and benefits. And as tough, as difficult as those decisions are, we think it's going to be very important that the county make sure that they look at the salaries and benefits as well as the other expenses when you're looking at, at making those cuts. I've already mentioned the fact that, that Williamsburg County does not have a fund balance, so we really don't have anything there that we can rely on to help us out. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, I just, I want y'all to know that you are not alone with this. We work with local governments and other counties throughout the state, and most of our clients are doing the same thing that we're talking about doing here, and that is not just, they're either, most of them are doing continuing resolutions, some of them are adopting a new budget, but they're all going to be less in terms of what that budget amount is compared to what it has been this last year. So most, if not just about all, local governments are looking at doing the same thing that we're having to do here, and that's make some cuts to, to try to get through at least the short term, so that we can better evaluate what things look like in a few months. And that relates to the other recommendation that we wanted to mention to y'all, and that is that from a time standpoint, we would recommend that you as a county look at continuing this continuing resolution at least through the first quarter, at least through the end of September, early October. And the reason is, if the state legislature is not going to come back until September, we feel like it's important for you as a county to see what's going to happen at the state level, and that will allow you to make some better decisions once you do decide to adopt another budget for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. So with that, I will, that's kind of our recommendation and what our thoughts are. Be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
Good evening. With the, how, how are you?
Good.
Oh, yes, this is Councilman Woods from District four. In, in regards to the fund balance, you said, do we have a low fund balance, or did you say we have no fund balance?
No. What the, what the projections are showing is that there is not a fund balance for general fund right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And when we speak of a fund balance, council, we're talking about a cash operating fund balance, not a paper balance.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wilson, District two. And so your recommendation again is that.
Our recommendation is that you take the, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty budget, the year we're in right now, and you reduce that by fifteen percent for your continuing resolution that you adopt for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one fiscal year.
And that will allow us to be able to spend the tan money when it comes in, in July?
Well, what it will allow you to do is to, yes, you'll get the, you'll get the tan money in July to help carry you through, but it will hopefully also allow you to continue operating until we can see what the state does, and it'll give us a little more time to see what's going to happen with the economy and with the pandemic, so that you can, you can make some decisions about a more defined two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget come October.
Basically, Mr. Finney, is the fact is, is that, yes, we may get, we, we have the potential to get our tan, but that's money that we have to pay back.
That's right, exactly. Yeah, that's money you're just borrowing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Can you see us reducing that budget by fifteen percent without cutting services or laying off people?
Liz, do you want to talk about the service part of it?
I don't, I don't see us reducing services, but I do see us looking at some of the salaries and fringe benefits. I think that we can still provide the level of services. It may be reduced, but not drastically reduced. And if we're considering reducing the level of services, then that means that we will have to look at fees.
Correct, and, and to, to reiterate what I mentioned earlier is, I do not see how you're going to be able to continue operate at a, at a fifteen percent less level without impacting salaries and benefits. There's a couple of different ways you can do that. You can look at doing some across-the-board kind of cuts, you can look at specific positions, but I know there are, there's a, there's a number of different things that you can do, but it's definitely going to impact salaries and benefits, no question.
And let me also say to the team, during a time like this, we don't want to increase taxes, we don't want to increase fees either. This is not the time to do it.
Exactly.
Now, you mentioned again some things that we could do with salaries and benefits. What, what specifically are some of those things that we could do?
Well, I think, I know one of the things that we've looked at with Ms. Nelson is, is looking at some across-the-board cuts depending upon what the, the salary and wage levels are. So the more money that is being made, the higher the percentage of the reduction. That's the most specific one that we've looked at so far. Obviously, there are some furloughs that, that are going on, and those right now go through the end of July, but there's been talk at the national level about expand, expanding those additional unemployment payments past the end of July, but we're waiting to see what happens with that.
Dr. Wright has also charged me with the task of getting together a voluntary retirement package, incentive package. So we're working on that, and we hope to have that information finalized before the end of the week. It's too early to see what financial impact that plan may have, because we're still working on it. But let me also say that this pandemic is like a moving target. We will have to monitor the financial data and the information that we get, and as we get that financial information and data, we will adjust our projections, Larry and Emily, and we will also share that information with council, once those projections have been updated. And I really do appreciate, you know, the assistance of you and Emily, because there's no way with all this information that I could have done it by myself, so we appreciate your assistance.
Well, thank you. You guys have done a great job yourself, so. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make note that when you talk about, in general, reducing, even reducing staff, I have no other choice. If you reduce staff, you're going to have to reduce services. That's, you can't have a million operating services and have ten people doing it. It's just not going to work. Those two are going to have to go hand in hand, and we are working on solutions for that as well.
Dr. Wright, I couldn't tell whether Mr. Jenkinson was trying to say something. It looks like he was talking, but couldn't, I can't hear him.
He's muted.
Mr. Billy looks like he's trying to say something, but I can't understand, I don't, his video.
DM.
Let me see if I can get him on the phone.
Yeah, because it doesn't look like he's muted, but.
No, he's not muted.
Mr. Jenkinson, we cannot hear you.
No, I see you with his hand in front of the camera.
No, we can't hear you. I think they're trying to call you by phone.
Billy, we're trying to. To be answered.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Billy, okay, we got you on the, let me, can you mute, I'm going to mute you.
Say that again.
Can you mute your, on your side?
I'm looking, I'm looking for audio on my, on iPad, I'm not using my rest iPad.
Okay, just mute your, I'm trying to mute you, hold on. Get it on the back there.
All right, let me try one of them.
Okay, they can hear you now, if you want to go ahead and speak, you can just speak through my phone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here's my question, Larry. I'm concerned about sales tax income going down real low because of local issues. I'm worried about. Public issues. I'm worried about the having sufficient funds to fund our one cent sales tax. Bond issue. If anybody taking a look at those numbers to see what we have and where the monies will come to make that payment.
We are evaluating that information right at this time. Our capital project sales tax. Has been taxed to make, to track the monthly information. Compared to last year, the same time. So we are tracking the information and analyzing it. But we do expect, the state is projecting a 60%. With all sales tax related revenues and that includes loss, capital project, sales tax, accommodation tax. And even some businesses that are impacted by those taxes.
So Mr. Jenkins, to answer your question, we are, we are looking at that. There's some different projections that are out there in terms of how much that might be, but we're going to track that very closely.
Ms. Nelson, I know you said you weren't finished your projections yet, but what, what is it looking like with the retirees? If that would be something that's going to be very helpful to us or with those packages?
It's too early to roll out any type of information until it's completely projected and analyzed. Because keep in mind, when you're talking about. A retirement package. It not only impacting like Dr. Wright said earlier, you know, some of the employees. Their departments may not, you know, may not be in a position. Them at this time. So those are some issues that we will probably face. You know, when looking at the employees on the list, are they in a position to retire? Does the departments need them or do they not need them? So it's too early to even share the results until Dr. Wright and I analyze the information.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
Yeah, Councilman Miller, just one, Liz, just a follow up. So are we saying we don't have? Anything in, in the way of a center incentive for. Early retirement or retirees?
At this point, again, what, you know, exactly what those incentives are. We, I don't want to disclose that information quite yet until we have all our facts in order. I don't say one thing and then it, it's not cost effective for, for us to do it. So yes, we are definitely looking at some form of incentive package.
Thank you.
We're ready to do first reading of ordinance number 2020-09, which is. Which is an ordinance providing for the issuance of a taxable or tax, tax anticipation note in the amount of 3.5 million for Williamsburg County. The fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021. Hereafter referred to as fiscal year 2020-2021. We just need a motion and a second.
Madam Supervisor. District Two, motion for first reading.
Second. District Seven.
Thank you. I need a second. Do I hear you? All right. Thank you. The next order of business. Is for a first reading of ordinance number 2020-10. An ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of waterworks and sewer system. Revenue bond for the trial community project series 2020 or such other appropriate. Theory motion in the amount of not to exceed 7.97 million 990 dollars of Williamsburg County, South Carolina. Authorizing the county. Council to determine certain matters related to the bond providing form and detail of the bond, providing for the payment of the bond. And providing for the disposition. Prices thereof and other matters related thereto. This is first reading. I only need a motion and a second.
Supervisor. Councilman Miller, District Three. Make a motion that we have our first reading.
For first reading. Okay, I need a second.
District Seven.
Okay. All right. Next order of business is for resolutions. We are looking at resolution number 2020-10. A resolution, resolution authorizing Williamsburg County and the town of Lane to enter to, into an easement. For water lines 25 feet in width for the installation and maintenance of buried water lines within the right of way of Williamsburg County maintained roads. Namely Hyman Road, Dean Avenue, Dorchester Road, Chesapeake Road located in the town lane. Pleasure of council.
Madam Supervisor, Councilman Miller, District Three. So move.
All right. We need a second. I heard Mr. Woods for the second.
Correct.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution, approval of resolution number 2020-10. Please signify by stating your district number.
District One.
District Two.
District Three.
District Four.
District Clear.
District Seven.
It is so ordered for resolution number 2020-10 is so approved. And the next order of business is revolution, not wrestle, revolution, resolution number 2020-11. A resolution authorizing that continue during fiscal year 2020-21. To the extent that funding is available and allows spending up to 85% of last year's budget. For personnel and operating expenses. What is the pleasure of council?
Also, we adopt the resolution at District Four.
Second, District Three.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of resolution number 2020-11, please signify by. Number.
District Four.
District Three.
District Seven.
District Two.
Get on you guys. Opposers have the same, right? Hearing that, it is, it is so, it is approved. Under the supervisor. This is going to be brief, just kind of want to get some information out to you all and let you know what's going on. We have. As of today, it has been reported that Williamsburg County has current, has or had 260 reported cases. Total cases in our county. We do still have employees that are on furlough. We have had to bring just a few triples of them back. And as far as the transit authority to get that back up and running at full speed. But for the most part, the majority of the ones who were furloughed are still furloughed. Our hours of operation has changed now from eight to 6 p.m. We are now operating from eight to five p.m. The can, the difference in that is that anytime after five, we may have had one or so people in here to, so to help cut down on some of the electricity expenses and things like that. It's better to just go ahead and, and close doors at five p.m. We entered into phase two today was, was starting phase two, which included those items in there. Our next meeting will be the choice of council to either be here in person while we create and, or while we maintain our social distancing. We are allowing at the maximum amount of people allowed in council chambers will be 10 people. So it'll be a first come, first served basis. We will continue to broadcast live and will also continue to utilize the teleconference phone line during that time. I do understand that we're coming up on some issues that are pretty important for us going forward and we, this point, we need to just ensure that we're, we have. We're meeting in person so that we can get all the information conveyed to us and out to our citizens in proper order. I'm noticing that some of these websites that have, are, are beginning to break down and because they have a lot of traffic on them. So I think that is important that we, we bring it back in and we will maintain our social distancing. Whether it be changing the configuration of where we're all sitting. So that will be, next meeting will be either if you choose to be in person or if you want to be on Zoom. We're fine with that as well. Testing started, COVID-19 testing started today at Hemingway Elementary School. We got started at about 10 and it's going to last to roughly about 2:30. It should be over by now. They shut the gates by now. We are resuming that air. We're going to resume at that location on Wednesday, same time, 10 a.m. to roughly 2:30 p.m. Also, we are still giving the final meal giveaway in the Greeleyville, King Street and Hemingway locations is Thursday. That's it for that giveaways. The final one is this Thursday is going to start at nine a.m. The Greeleyville location and as it has been in the past, it will continue on through the other two districts as well. Earlier, when I left the Heming, Hemingway testing site for COVID, we had roughly 86 people that got there. So that was pretty good within an hour and 20 minutes to get 86 people through the line. What they finished up with, I don't know because I had to come back here, but I will have those numbers posted. Any questions, comments or concerns to my update on our COVID-19 response?
Madam Supervisor, I got a question, but it's not about, it's not about the virus.
I'm here. I'm listening.
Okay. Our courthouse, what hours are they open and what hours are they closed during the week?
All county facilities are open on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays from eight to five p.m. only.
From eight o'clock to five?
Yes, sir.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So Monday and Friday.
Right. We're here at eight o'clock, but the bill, the doors don't open until eight thirty. So it's eight thirty to five p.m. Tuesday, Thursday and Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
Sure. They closed the first and last day of the week. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
They close when?
The first and last.
Yes.
Our next meeting date is when?
The third Tuesday in the month.
Well, and what time will it be?
Sorry, no, I, I think we sent out a calendar when our next meeting is. It does not fall in that, that, that normal flow. I have to get Tammy to. So refresh that. I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's a consecutive. Okay.
What time will it be since we may come in or may not? So will it be at two or will it be at six?
Early, at least at two. We want to get them out the way.
Two, okay.
Two p.m.
Okay.
Any other questions?
When do we intend for, for the county employees to, courthouse start coming back on Monday and Friday and?
When we can get additional staff. Right now, a lot of this that we're doing is for our shortage of staff members and also the fact that we're trying to lessen the exposure of our employees. By not having the facilities open every day. Now people are here every day. It's just that the hours of operation. Where we're allowing citizens to come in has been minimized.
But the employees are in the courthouse Monday and Friday working is my question.
That you would have to take up with the clerk of court. I know our people are here in this building. Any other questions? Hearing none. We need to go into executive, executive session to discuss a contractual matter concerning Williamsburg County airports. We will bring on our special counsel, Mr. Stan, Attorney Stan Barnett. He will also be in executive session with us. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, give me just a few seconds. Let me break y'all out real fast. Hold on.
Hang on, let me finish it. We got a second, a motion and a second. I didn't hear it.
Yes, you did.
District Three.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by district number.
District One.
District Seven.
District Two.
District Three.
District Four.
District Six.
It is so order, opposers the same, right? Hearing none. All those in favor of going into executive order has been, has been approved. So we're going in executive session. Go ahead, Summer, you can. Do your thing.
Dr. Wright, you probably don't need us for the executive session, do you?
Right. Exactly. No, thank you all. I appreciate you for attending.
Well, thank you everybody for letting us come join you and we'll look forward to spending some more time with you.
Take care, Mrs..
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
We'll talk later.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye bye.
I guess in the process of closing everybody, bringing everybody in.
So.
It takes a few minutes.
So this changes.
Okay, but I need you to, can you call Mr. Stan on your phone? I'm gonna leave my laptop, leave the laptop with y'all. Maybe they see a walkout. Can you, can you call him on, you got his phone number? Call him, Tammy, if you don't mind. Hey, Stan. Mr. Joe, do you see a button that says join? There you go. There you go. Okay.